Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. Welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session. Tonight, we have two topics. The first, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Rains to kind of set up, and then we'll move into the second one after that. Larry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present on both the fiscal year 23 overview of our budget as well as our action plan that is linked to the strategic plan. Hard to believe that we're in February already, but we are underway with our fiscal year 24 budget process and wanted to take an opportunity to provide the mayor and council with a brief overview of how things are going in fiscal year 23 to give a little bit of a foundation to the information that you'll be receiving on fiscal year 24 budget. So with that, the finance team is here, Angel and Roberta, and I'll hand it over, and then they'll hand the baton back to me, and I will cover some of the action items.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we will be presenting you with budget information from July 1st of 2022 to December 31st of 2022. So tonight, we'll be presenting to you a truly mid-year snapshot of where we are with our budget. Of course, we open with our budget philosophy, and we understand that the budget was presented or prepared under the philosophy where we would maintain the current levels of services with the consideration of internal reallocations where necessary to accommodate changes in programming. So whatever we needed to do to keep the levels of service as they were in fiscal year 2022, we did that to accommodate all these programming within the different departments. Reduced revenue and expenditures in anticipation of a hard-pressed budget year. Departments are required, as mayor and council know, departments are required each fiscal year to present to city manager a course of action to include a 5% reduction in expenditures in the event mayor and council has to consider budget cut. So every year, department heads are required, based on our strategic plan, to present to city manager a course of action that would include a 5% reduction in expenditures should the situation warrant that. Also, in consideration of our budget, we looked at our strategic plan, and the focus of the strategic plan is to improve our community's quality of life, civic pride, and provide quality jobs to residents. And the last one is where we are right now. We view progress at mid-year. Okay, we're going to be looking at our general fund revenues. Fiscal 2023 revenues are trending higher. This item will be discussed in a subsequent slide. The city focused its revenue numbers on growth of housing in the community and sales taxes. Single-family permits decreased significantly during the first half of the fiscal year, and we attribute this decline to the volatility of the market and the steady increase in interest rates. However, commercial construction permits remain steady, and we will also be looking at that further down in our presentation. For sales taxes, hospitality sector is up. Every aspect of our sales tax revenue, we see a significant growth. Retail food for home consumption and general retail, these categories are up. Marketplace sales, Wayfair, that's up, and construction sales tax is also up. We will look at the general fund revenues. The largest share of the city's revenues comes from sales and not property taxes, which is good news for our residents. Sales taxes make up 42% of the budget, while property tax makes up only 7% at a tax rate of $96.43 on a $100,000 home. So the city relies heavily on sales taxes to fund its general fund obligations and expenditures. Three-year revenue comparison, and this comparison is for fiscal years 2021 to fiscal year 2023, and these are snapshot numbers as of December 31st of each fiscal year. And it shows us revenues collected in '21, '22, and '23. We see that collections trended upward over these three-year fiscal years from $25.1 million in fiscal '21 to $33.7 million in fiscal '23, and each fiscal year, the revenues increased steadily. In the two prior fiscal years, the city exceeded its budgeted revenues by about 16% to 20%, and we anticipate a slight increase in our revenue collections over budget in fiscal year 2023 also. Major general fund revenues by source, December 31st. As of December 31st, we had local sales taxes. We collected $15.3 million in local sales taxes, and we're projecting to collect $30.5 million. Mayor and council will note that the city is projecting to collect almost 100% of its major revenues, in some cases, over 100%. As I indicated earlier, sales taxes are going up in all categories. For example, in hospitality, to date, in fiscal 2022, we collected $1.5 million. In fiscal '23, in the hospitality industry, we collected $1.9 million, and we expect the increase to continue. We're looking at general fund expenditures. Mayor and council, we are providing a breakdown of the fiscal '23 general fund budget. Personnel costs, as always, constitute 41.15% of the city's overall general fund budget for a total of $62.6 million. Again, our strategic plan focus is to improve our community's quality of life, civic pride, and provide quality jobs to residents. The city strives to do so by keeping its citizens safe and engaged by allocating resources towards public safety and community services. Therefore, the largest share of personnel costs in the general fund budget is in the areas of public safety and community services. I also want to highlight the 32.5% or $30.2 million of funds transfer from the general fund to Capital Projects Fund, and that is to accommodate work on the city's infrastructure and to maintain principal and interest payments on excise tax debts and leases. So we see that the city is managing its resources well enough that we had enough funds available in the general fund to transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund to accommodate projects for work on the city's infrastructure. Okay, budgeted expenditures by department, December 31st. This slide shows us the general fund projected expenditures by department. Most of the department's spending is on par with budget allocation with slight variances expected at year-end, unlike other fiscal years. Looking at media activities, it appears that several of our departments are spending at a comfortable level based on their budgets. From prior year data, on average, the city spends 77% of its total general fund budget. I will go quickly to the next slide because it gives us the rest of the departments and also summarizes the budget numbers. The city is projecting expenditures at $48.5 million. It is a $14 million drop from the original budget and a projected spending of approximately 77% of our budget. Much of the funding expected to be left on the table, on average, is due to vacant positions that are either still open or expected to be filled toward the end of the fiscal year. Extended length of time to receive and pay items on order. Department's ability to absorb the mid-cycle comp and class study recommendations in their current budgets without needing a transfer, and the $3.5 million of council contingency that is included in the general fund budget. I would like to note here that 20% of unspent budget, there was a 20% of unspent budget in fiscal 2022, and that was from personnel. Personnel cost of $10 million that the city was able to transfer out into the grants fund through the upper federal funds that were received by the city. We anticipate, however, for police and fire to expend about 90% of their budget, which would be a drop from last fiscal year due to the $10 million being transferred or expenditures being transferred out of their budgets. Now, we'll look at the other funds. When we first put these slides out, there was a little concern, and we had to revise the slides, and I will bring to mayor and council's attention why we revised the slides. We looked at the wastewater revenues, and the projections were lower than anticipated. If we look at the budgeted revenues for wastewater, we have $25.6 million, and we're looking at actual spending of $7.9. The projected spending through the end of the fiscal year, projected collections, rather, through the end of the fiscal year for wastewater is $27.3 million. And included in that $27.3 million is $11.4 million of upper monies. As I indicated in the previous slide, we had $10 million of upper funds that we were able to utilize to fund public safety personnel expenditures. Given the fact that we have work to be done in the wastewater area, the city and mayor and council approved $10 million to be transferred from the general fund into the wastewater fund, and we have an additional $1.4 million of upper funds that mayor and council also approved to be transferred to the wastewater funds for a total of $11.4 million, which is what is included in the $26.5 million of budgeted revenues. Under the expenditures for wastewater, we have $28.3 million of budget projected. We have spent $3.3 million in actual expenditures, and we're projecting to spend $6.6 million. When I address the CIP later in the subsequent slides, I will elaborate a little more on the expenditures under the wastewater funds. Capital improvement projects by department. Mayor and council approved $103.8 million in capital projects, which included $25 million in anticipated bond proceeds. As mayor and council know, of the $25 million in projects anticipated in bonded monies anticipated in fiscal '23, the city got residents' approval to move forward with only $6 million of projects in fiscal year 2023. Some of the projects included in the $1.3.8 million are the Thornton Road widening, half-street improvement, Fennel Tech Park, reversible lanes, Thornton Road, funding to replace Fire Station 503, the Florence Boulevard streetscape enhancement. These are a few of the projects that are earmarked in our fiscal year 2023 budget. I want to pause here because the next slide, we will be using some abbreviations. I just want to pause to kind of give mayor and council, which I don't believe you need it, but also our listeners and viewers, give them an overview of what some of the abbreviations stand for. For the CIP, it is the Capital Improvement Project. For ISF, it's Internal Service Fund. CFD, Community Facilities Districts. HOPE, Highway Users Revenue Fund, and CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. And I'm going to talk a little about our capital projects. Under our capital projects, also, this slide, we had to make changes too because it would not have given mayor and council as it was first presented, a true picture of where we are with our capital improvement funds or our capital improvement projects. If mayor and council note, we are looking at a HOPE budget for capital improvement of $6.9, and we've only expended $21,000. However, we have $2.1 million in incumbencies. I will go to the other slide to give us another view, additional view of the remaining capital improvement projects. We have DIF wastewater. We have a budget of $21.9 million. We have spent $788,000. However, we have encountered almost $7 million in projects. And I want to pause to note that some of these projects are going to be completed in phases. And so we have, some of the incumbencies are based on contracts that have already been issued and authorized by council and/or purchase orders that we have in our system. And because some of these projects are based on phases, we don't anticipate to spend all of the $21 million or all of the $6 million in the transportation historic DIF funds because we are completing these projects in a phased-out process. We're going on to our fiscal year 2024 budget calendar, and I will turn that over to Roberta, who is going to present to council on this section.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to go ahead and present to you a review of our key dates and timelines of our 24 budget. As you all know, in October, and our budget actually was kicked off in October this year. This is when we kicked off our CIPs, and the departments began working on the CIP projects and getting those entered into our CIP software. During this time, also, we began working and presenting with city manager our budget revenue projections. In November, we did that in November, sorry. And in December is when we actually kicked off our departments working on their operational budget. So a lot of those key dates that you see in December, that has to do with the departments working on their operational budget along with consolidated fees. In January, we did do some shifting around, which we allotted extra time to work with certain departments and divisions with their CIPs. This will actually be beneficial as we will be able to present more information when it comes to the study session we do in March. As we are right now in February, we're actually received last week from all the departments their operational budget. So that is what we actually are going to be working on right now. And so next week, we will be meeting with city manager and the departments to review their operational budgets. I glossed over the CIPs, so excuse me for that. The CIPs were actually completed back in November, all of them. We'll also be, at the end of February, we'll be presenting to city manager a comprehensive budget. This will include all of the CIPs and all the operational budget. We'll jump over to April, and that's when we're actually going to be projecting to distribute the FY '24 proposed budget to city manager. And we're looking at the tentative date of April 12th for the city council budget retreat. We're actually going to be holding the public hearing for council adoption for the fee resolution. We're actually going to be holding that in May. Let me make that correction. Also, in May, we'll be doing the adoptions of the tentative budget and the CFD tentative budget. And that's when we'll be running the publication for the FY '24 budget summary and primary and secondary property tax. In June, we will be holding our public hearings for the budget and property tax levies, the adoption of the FY '24 final budget, and the first reading of the tax levy for city and FY '24 property tax levy of the CFDs. At the end of June, we'll be doing the final budget proposed onto the city's website. In July, we'll start our FY '24 fiscal year, and that'll be also doing the adoption of the FY '24 property tax and the second reading for the property tax levy. So we have an accelerated calendar this year, but we definitely are planning to have everything adopted by the end of June.
Okay, we'll pause for any questions from mayor and council.
Angel, I just have a question on the capital improvement projects and expenditures to date and funds, December 31st. I think it's, I don't have the page number, but is there a reason why the budget dollars only add up to $51.6 million? And the total we have down there is 103. Is there something not in there? Or is there another $40, well, $52 million in other expenditures? I just look at the totals, I don't... There's no other column. I don't know where the other dollars are, I guess. Or did I not see the whole thing?
Okay, we talked...
Look at the page before.
Okay, we had it.
Okay, there's a page before. Okay, so it's all that, okay.
Yes.
My apologies.
Okay.
Need to look at both pages together. Thank you. All right. Okay, and then, Brad, I wanted to ask, can I make a comment in terms of how the budget could be affected by this year's legislature? Or can I wait to do that? It deals with this.
It's on my notes, too.
I think this is an agendized item to discuss, the mid-year budget and next year's budget process. So I think those comments are appropriate and agendized.
Okay, thank you. So, and thank you for that, and I apologize for my... I just missed a page. But I do have a comment with regard to the revenue budget and the general fund. This year, there's legislation out there that could affect us to the tune of between 10% to 14% of our budget. Actually, more than that. It's probably about 17% of our budget, our total, just general fund budget. And with regard to those sales tax numbers, which look healthy, but the legislature seems to want to tell cities what they can and cannot collect. So they're dipping into our business, and if there's anybody here who's listening, I would recommend that you reach out to your legislators and tell them to back off because it will affect us, and they don't seem to think that we'll cut services when half of our budget is police and fire. And we're trying to increase our number of police we have. And in fact, we did increase the number by 10, 10 new police officers. And now, they're going to cut, they're cutting total cities' budgets, this is across the state, about 70 of the cities, by about $410 million. For us, it's about $10 million, and so it's a pretty significant hit to our budget. I'm just hoping that we don't have to deal with that coming up. And if we do, though, you might want to keep that in mind in terms of, you know, how we're budgeting for next year. As we get closer to the end of the legislative session, we'll have a better idea. But the 5% may not be enough, you know, in terms of how we manage our budget. So just saying that, I'm going to try and get some information out to the public so that we can maybe have a little letter-writing campaign to our legislators and let them know that we're not interested in them dipping into the budgets of the city. But just know that it's there, and it is real, and they are pretty serious about it, so...
And we're following this action closely through the Arizona League of Citizens.
Yeah, I mean, from income tax to shared revenues to tax on food, tax on rentals. I mean, it's all under the gun right now. Go ahead, Matt.
Also, if I might add, unfunded mandates and some stuff that came out today, services that we would have to provide as a city with no state funding but would be required by law. One of the interesting ones I saw on the first page I made a note was the food for home consumption, which is doing well for us. Very small tax, and if you research it more, a lot of people in the state don't pay that, just depending on where they live. But the cities that do depend on it is very important. And the thing that they're saying is it's trying to help people, you know, that need help the most. Well, most people that are on assistance with food don't pay the tax anyway.
Like the WIC program.
Yeah, the WIC program and those sort of programs, they don't pay the tax anyway, so it's not going to help those people. It's just going to hurt us. And I know it's always, we always say, "police and fire." And it's not a scare tactic. It's that, you can see, it's the largest portion of our general fund budget, and that's where our sales tax goes. So it's very important that we keep track of these measures. The mayor's been doing an excellent job giving us the information. It's important for us as council members to communicate that and also as citizens. You know, the mayor has a great idea to get the information out so we can let people know who to contact and what about because it could really affect our cities with no back funding from their mandates, so...
And the state has a $2 billion surplus, and they are going after our surplus. So it seems incongruous, so...
And I've always been proud of our budget for making that 5% ready reduction, but now it's looking scarier, like we might have to look at a 10, you know, or even a 15, which I know we can do it, just not going to be fun at all, and we're going to miss out on a lot of services and safety stuff. So I want to commend you guys as a staff, as an entire city, for making sure we do those budgets because I'm very proud of it. Obviously, we always win the awards because you guys do such a great job. So thank you for this tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions, Brad, Angel, staff? Thank you, guys. Sorry, got to get off my soapbox.
You're fine, Mr. Mayor. And again, I want to thank Angel and Roberta for all of their hard work. Obviously, this is a busy time of the year for us as we're attempting to finalize our audit and put our budget together. So there's a bit of an overlap. And if I can, just build very, very quickly on a couple of the comments that have been made tonight related to the state's desire to ultimately control our local sales tax. The two categories that have been referenced are considered operational revenues to us. And so it really, and I suspect that in most cities, that's the same. And so it will not be a reduction in capital infrastructure. It will be a straight reduction to level of service, which I know this mayor and council has worked so diligently to maintain. Our philosophy going into the fiscal year budget is the same. Maintain the level of service and discussing those expansions. You'll see that when you meet in April. Maintaining tax rates, allocating our one-time revenues directly to one-time capital expenditures with a focus on the strategic plan. Angel and Roberta have done a nice job outlining the fact that we are accelerating our timeframe this year. The council is typically met in... The, the council is typically met in, uh, late April or early May, uh, to, to actually hear the, uh, to receive the city manager's proposed budget, but we are moving that up. And, uh, if you look at that cali- calendar very closely, you'll see that we are, uh, attempting to achieve the first reading of the budget before the end of this fiscal year. And so it really, we, we end up with a, a finalized budget. We do have some tax, the, the property tax elements that will need to be considered in, in July. And we've strategically, uh, placed those on a calendar due to the Fourth of July holiday. And we've had, in the past, we've had issues perhaps with getting a quorum. And so this year, we've, we've, we've relieved ourself of that obligation, but we'll still meet the state statute of having them approved into the county by the, uh, I believe it's the third Monday in August. Uh, what the mayor and council will see as part of our budget, uh, that the, that the city manager will be presenting is an incorporation of our cultural initiative philosophies and goals, uh, in alignment with our strategic agenda. So that will be something that will be new to all of you. Uh, but I, I think the important message tonight for our council and our residents is that this is just a snapshot. It's a, it's a point in time of six months. Uh, we still have another six months worth of, uh, in, in essence, from an accounting perspective, of, of data that we'll be collecting and certainly will be introducing that to the mayor and council in our meeting in April. So I want to spend, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a, a few minutes on our action plan, our fiscal year twenty-three action plan. And, and really what it is, is, uh, an opportunity for us to highlight to the mayor, council, and community uh, the activities that have been taking place. To give everyone, uh, context, we have a strategic agenda that has goals and objectives. And each year, we establish an action plan for that particular fiscal year that aligns specifically with our policy document and the budget. It, it really drives a lot of the allocation of, uh, of budget authority into these various, um, in, into these various, uh, goals and objectives and action items. And, and, and I am not, I know all of you have a copy of the mid-year report. I am not going to go line item by line item for all of you that, tonight, because there's, there's quite a few. But, uh, it is available for public consumption, uh, through this agenda. It's been included in that. But I, I, I think what I would do, what I'll do this evening, Mayor, is just highlight some of the areas that I think are very important for the community to recognize that we've been focused on. And, uh, Angel and Roberta have already done a very nice job talking about one of our major philosophies, which is a goal, uh, which is to develop budgets that could withstand a five percent rebu- a budget reduction. That is something that is incorporated into our system. But I think as you look at the report, you'll see that we've had a heavy focus this last fiscal year specifically on, uh, allocating grant funds to one-time, uh, one-time expenses. So there, so we've, we've been very successful on that front. Uh, we've been very successful at implementing the classification and compensation system, uh, back into our, uh, operations. And we were able to fund that again this year as well. Uh, a couple of the items that I think are very important is, uh, under the disposal of underutilized city properties. That was a goal that was established, uh, a, a, a couple of years ago. And within the, in the last six months, we've had very good progress on having dialogue with the Chicanapurla Causa for some properties that we own on Main Street. And we hope to finalize an agreement that'll be coming before the mayor and council here in the very near term. And, uh, more importantly, we had, uh, over the years, assembled a number of very small parcels that were not being utilized by the city. And as the council knows, you gave us authorization to put those out. We accepted bids and were able to take those off of, uh, off of our asset list, put those back in the hands of private entities so they'll go back on the tax rolls, and we made roughly fifty-one thousand dollars as part of that as well. Uh, so many of those have been, uh, the, we've, we've transferred the deed to those and, and we're moving forward with, uh, with getting rid of those other properties that, um, that, that may be underutilized. Uh, analyzing, uh, five programs, uh, for service to ensure that the efficiency infect- effectiveness against the private sector exists. And this is something that we've really begun to take very, very seriously. And our organization is looking, uh, not only at the private sector as an option, but also looking at our neighboring communities, how they're, how effective they are at providing various services. We consistently are evaluating ourself against those particular entities. Uh, but this last year, we had a very thorough, uh, evaluation on the residential, uh, trash collection routes. And in fact, that particular analysis, which started as a capstone project through the U of A, actually led us to make some changes within our, our, uh, both our residential and commercial routes to, to even improve that effectiveness, even more so at this time of growth. Uh, we also have been, we've implemented the project docs, obviously, at planning and, at, at the planning department. And, and those, uh, evaluations of those plan and permits are, uh, much more efficient today through an electronic, uh, mechanism. Um, the mayor and council understands the impact that this growth is having on our community and the need for us to have a very robust capital infrastructure plan to meet the growth, not only for the existing residents, but for those, uh, new residents that will be moving to Casa Grande or, and/or electing to bring their business here. Um, as, as I articulated last year during the adoption of the budget, our, our capital improvement program was certainly the, uh, the highest in terms of dollar figures that it's been, uh, in the twenty-one years that I've been here. And, and Joe was kind enough to outline, uh, the project. Many of those projects are underway today. We do anticipate that we'll have some carryover because of the phasing that was mentioned earlier. But, uh, the most important element of that is not only identifying the projects, it's establishing a financing plan that goes with that. You could, you could dream of capital projects all you, all you'd like, but without some type of a funding mechanism, they usually don't get executed. But, uh, essentially what you'll see is that we have worked diligently to maintain the philosophy, uh, pay as you go as we can. Uh, uh, Angel has outlined some of the federal money we received as a result of the pandemic that has been allocated to public infrastructure. And we are relying very heavily on the development impact fees that are being paid by new developments. So it is a balance. It's not just one particular source. Uh, and, and it's, it's very, it's not, it's not, uh, reliable. It's, we don't rely on the sales tax that we ultimately generate. So both of those, uh, that, the CIP is really beginning to take shape. Uh, and the mayor and council is, is very familiar with a proposal that was, uh, that was approved this last year and in fact funded the first day of this fiscal year, which was, uh, the Public Safety Retirement System bringing the unfunded liability, uh, uh, into, uh, into, to a zero balance, essentially saving the, the taxpayers and the, and the community over thirty million dollars over a course of fifteen to seventeen years. And, uh, and, and I did send out a report to the mayor and council on this most recently, but I'm happy to report that after the first year, our actuarials are indicating that we are funded at over a hundred percent, uh, of that liability. So, so that's, that, in, in essence, that has really been a fantastic initiative that was, uh, that, that really started with the strategic agenda, yes. If I can move to the community connection components, which has a series of goals of really our interaction with our community. This is something that we added this, this last year. And again, the mayor and council can see a number of, uh, elements that we've been working on. But, uh, one of the, one of the first, and I referenced it just a, a bit ago, is, uh, adopting and sustaining a culture of practice that engages, uh, a part, the partnerships, our, our community residents. And so we have been very focused in building a link between our cultural initiative and many of the programs and the, uh, just our general way of doing business in the city. And, and you'll see more of that this upcoming year. Uh, increased positive interaction, uh, with, with our community. You, you, you probably have recognized the additional work that we're doing out of the Public Information Office to in- uh, increase our inter- uh, interaction with the citizens. And I know, I don't really want to go into a lot of depth because it will be featured at the mayor's state of the city on March the eighth, but we've got another tool that we think will be beneficial that will be deployed this fiscal year as well, uh, in that particular category. Um, we, we want to really focus on the events that the city holds to ensure that we're, we, we are having events that, that offer, um, activities for our diverse culture. And, uh, you can see there's a list of those, but two that I want to highlight tonight. The, uh, Fire Department promoted a Community Water Safety Day at, uh, Carr Big Nat Park this last year. And the Arts and Humanities Commission partnered with the Main Street. And this is that collaborative piece that I know the mayor and council has really asked, uh, staff to focus on. Uh, uh, the Arts and Humanities Commission partnered with the Main Street to hold a Hispanic Heritage event during the downtown After Dark Series, and I thought that was very successful. And it really is, it is just evidence of us, of the city partnering with our, with our, our various partners and nonprofits in order to, uh, obtain our goals of making Casa Grande better. Moving on to community enhancement, which is really focused on, on, uh, the appearance of our community and, uh, and essentially bringing, uh, additional value to, to this organization, uh, to this community, additional pride. Uh, you can see that, uh, we have expended approximately eighty thousand dollars in city fund in direct abatement. That is a program that's, that we've had for several years now. We continue to, we've allocated, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. And it seems like every year we're spending it quicker and quicker in our efforts to, to really work on the abatement of those, uh, blighted areas. Uh, the Planning Department has also organized two neighborhood drop-off events for residents to drop off old appliances, uh, furniture, tires, junk, and, and the like. That is worked very closely, uh, with a lot of intention with the cleanups that our Public Works Department has been doing in the alleyways. And so we're, we're really trying to build some synergy with those events. Um, the Community Services Department continues to host the biannual Keep Casa Grande Beautiful street cleanup. And, uh, and, and that, that was another successful, uh, event this, uh, this last s- six months. And, um, the Police Department abated seventy-one graffiti locations as of mid-year this last year. Uh, related to improvements of quality life i- infrastructure, you'll find that, uh, we've, we're underway with the Florence Boulevard Streetscape Beautification Project. Uh, and I know the community will be, uh, getting some more input. We've, we've been, uh, interacting with the community, and there'll be some, uh, additional information that'll be coming out, uh, uh, very, very shortly here. And another project that I want to highlight, although there's several of them in this category, uh, Community Services, uh, opened the Rotary Park Trail that actually, uh, was, was done at the beginning of this fiscal year and has become a very nice amenity. Uh, the mayor and council knows our interest on broadband services, and we've been looking at solutions that range from wireless to actual fiber in the ground to, uh, essentially improve the broadband services to our community. Uh, that is an ongoing effort, but there's been, there's been, uh, a number of positive, um, uh, efforts made. And then finally, in the transit plan, the mayor and council will hear a little more about our next step on the transit plan, but that is, that is moving forward and something that we anticipate will be highlighted at the mayor's state of the city as well. So that, I'm just trying to intrigue people, Mayor, to, to show up to that, to hear all the cool things that are gonna be transpiring. On economic expansion, uh, the, the, the mayor and council is very familiar with the fact that our twenty-thirty general plan was awarded, received an award this year. Uh, we're very proud of that. Uh, and, and really, we've, we've, as a staff and a community, been working very diligently to incorporate the various goals and objectives that were incorporated into the plan that was developed by the stakeholders. And, um, there's a, there's a number of activities that are underway today. We've had a heavy emphasis on water resources planning. Uh, the, uh, we've got, we've, we've, we've developed a water resources plan that, that, um, that focuses on demand management or conservation. Uh, Save It program has, has really become, um, a program that is followed by a number of residents in the community. We're obviously working in a partnership with Arizona Water, uh, uh, to, uh, as we deploy that. And, uh, more importantly, we've, we've had a heavy focus on expanding our designation of assured water supply for the city's water company that would serve as Copper Mountain Ranch. And I'm hoping to receive good news on that in the next couple of months. Uh, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the I, I-Tin widening because I think everybody knows where we're at today, but there's still a heavy emphasis in, in attempting to find the funding. And I know the mayor was, uh, was, uh, testifying at a committee last week, and I believe it, that, that, uh, the bill passed through, through that committee unanimously. Um, we still have hope that the federal government's gonna find a way to, to, uh, contribute to that project as well. We, we have taken a, a very, uh, a very renewed interest on enhancing the art and culture within Casa Grande. There's been a number of projects, uh, ranging from our, uh, Union Pacific Underpass, uh, um, uh, to many grants that have been awarded to nonprofits, to the, uh, to, to the various artwork that was done in front of the recreation center. I think that, and, and I believe the mayor and council should have a flyer related to some, uh, work that's gonna be done at the skate park as well. So there's a renewed effort. We could not do that without the assistance of the Arts and Humanities Commission, which is always a great partner, uh, from a commission perspective. Education and workforce development, uh, we continue to work very, very diligently with the, with the various, uh, school districts and, uh, our, our local community college to align the workforce efforts and essentially ensuring that individuals that, uh, are interested in, in working in Casa Grande has, uh, a better understanding and better skill sets that can essentially transcend right into jobs in our industries. And, um, I know you've heard the mayor say this before, and I agree wholeheartedly. I think we have more alignment on that front than we have had in, in a bit. And, uh, and so we'll continue to make improvements there. Uh, one of the, uh, programs that I'm most, uh, proud of is our internship program at the city, and I hope that others will begin to model that. I think with the likes of PACE, uh, that's being considered at the, uh, Casa Grande High School District, uh, and the NOVA program and our third grader re- reading initiatives, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that our industries will take, uh, some interest in really focusing on internship programs. We, we had ours for, I think it's been the fourth or fifth year this last summer, and had seven local students in a variety of departments, and always find that to be, uh, very enlightening. I'm gonna just end very quickly here, Mr. Mayor, on the focus on, on building a healthy and safe community. Obviously, that's, uh, everyone knows that there, that means there's a heavy emphasis on public safety. Again, you'll see the accomplishments that, that have been achieved to this point. But I think it's important for our community to know that our Police Department is working on becoming an accredited, becoming accredited through the Arizona Law Enforcement Academy, uh, uh, Enforcement Accreditation Program. Uh, they're underway with that. They've resumed the Coffee with the Cops events. And, um, and, uh, they've expanded their community policing efforts with their BEEP patrols. Uh, the Fire Department has, has worked diligently to improve response times through the implementation of the DECKON software. They're working, uh, they've worked very closely with the Communications Department to expand the level of service there through the consoles that have been added. And obviously, they are, uh, uh, in the final stages of the Fire Station five oh three designed to add, add a new fire station. Um, the Police Department is scheduling homeless outreach events with, uh, mental health providers and, uh, each month, and, uh, training officers with crisis intervention team programming. And, uh, so I just, I, I, I close by using one of the, uh, the, uh, taglines that was established as part of our cultural initiative, Stronger United. We believe that, that is best served. And, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I would entertain any questions on the document or any questions that you might have otherwise.
Larry, just want to say, uh, great job by you and your staff. Uh, I really think that this whole strategic initiative and, and our, you know, general plan, translating to our strategic initiative has been, uh, I think, an amazing, you know, guideline for the city. And, you know, with the input from council, input from all your directors, uh, really input from the community because it was, they, they approved our general plan. Um, so I, I think that it's really a whole community, um, program, really, that's done, uh, and, and has given some great direction, I think, to the city. You know, taking, especially taking into consideration, uh, the comments and, and input from our community. So, um, is there anybody else in the council? Lisa?
Just a comment, and I, I piggyback on what you said. I, I think back of what, gosh, probably eight or nine years ago when we didn't have these documents. And it really, I, I feel that it just gives us just a mission and, and a, um, you know, a guideline to move forward. So I just really appreciate the staff and you, Larry, just kinda, just the, the focus areas. And we, we use it as a guideline. Obviously, it's not, you know, written in stone. We can't change it. But, um, I think, you know, obviously, we'll use it this year, I would imagine, when we go through the budget process to identify, um, if there, if we need to change these focus areas. But, um, it's just, I, I just feel that it's just been a great document and working together and getting feedback and, um, and, and just see what our focus is and where we want to move the city. So I just really appreciate everything that you've done and the staff on this.
Matt?
Thanks. I don't want to belabor it, but I'm so proud of this because it's one of those things that a lot of people, a lot of organizations have done and said, okay, there's our plan. We have it. We have constantly revisited this. You tie it together, and every council action we take, um, budget-wise, if you look through our packets, is tied to one of these initiatives. So just great, again, great work, and then just reviewing with our action plan, meshing with the strategic plan every year. I mean, it, it just really helps, and I'm glad you keep that on the forefront. Starts with you and then goes down to every other department and every, every employee. So much appreciated, and I'm glad that we keep this as a living document that we use all the time.
Absolutely. Donna?
You know, and I, I will belittle it for just a moment, because I think that, you know, I agree with Lisa and Matt, and it is a roadmap, uh, for, for us, but it's also a roadmap for our citizens, the transparency of what we do and how we do it and why we do it, and I think that the explanations may seem simple to some, um, and complex to others, so I think that Angel and her staff have done a great job, uh, as well as our city manager, and I think that it's a working document, and we will continue, um, to make changes, but the, the staff and the executive team that actually puts that into everything that they do when they come before us, it just, it shows that it is a working document, so, thank you.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I think this portion of our meeting should have been called the City Manager's State of the City.
True, true.
Uh, and, and it's very good, I mean, all, all good stuff. Um, there was one, uh, portion that you, you mentioned, and I wanted to chime in.
It's interesting you say that, Bob, because that is the theme of our, uh, State of the City.
Oh, very good. But that was the graffiti abatement, and I, I noticed, I think you referred to it as, uh, blight abatement, and I think that's a good term for it. I'm very proud of that program, it is mostly volunteer, uh, staffed, and, um, I have made, uh, observations over the last several years. When you drive through a city, uh, primarily, I've seen them in Nevada and California, that does not have a robust graffiti abatement program, man, it is obvious. And, uh, and, and our, our city looks pristine compared to what it could be if we didn't have that program, so. Chief, thank you, keep up the good work, and, uh, thank you, Larry.
Anybody else, any other comments? No, I'm good.
I could say ditto.
I'm the, I'm the new, I'm new kid on the block, and so, but I will say this, um, one of the first questions that I've asked, um, when I was even thinking about running, is how's our city, how are we financially, or how's our budget? Great things about our city, and I'm proud of our city. And our finance department, how you all worked so diligently with details to make an easy transition for a young man like myself coming on board? It makes it much easier, that we have a lot of things in place, and that we're doing very well as a city, and I'm proud of the city of Casa Grande.
Ditto. Thank you, Larry, thank you, Angel. All right, we'll stand adjourned till seven o'clock when the city council meeting begins. Thank you, everybody.